Good evening. Tonight's meeting, we want to welcome Jeremy Ray, Superintendent Jeremy Ray, and the Sauk Lake School Board for our joint meeting. First up, we have the Ethics and FOA Training. The council meeting will be following the joint meeting immediately after. And yep, Solicitor Tim Murphy, we have.
Good evening. I brought some fun materials for everybody tonight, make this, hopefully make this easier and quicker for you. I've got a few documents on ethics. Thank you for everyone's patience. This has become something of yearly tradition, and I look forward to it. Typically, those of you who have been through this will recall, I usually start with the ethics, because it's my favorite part. And I give short shrift, I think, to the FOA statute. So I'm intending to reverse that tonight and start with the FOA, particularly because state law requires that all of you as public officials have some FOA training. So part of what we're doing tonight is to serve that state end. Let me know, and I think I'd like to wrap this up. I don't think you want me going more than 30 minutes. So if somebody could kind of, Counselor Hatch, could you kindly go like this when I have five minutes left? Thank you. Because I can go on, unfortunately, at some length. If you turn to this state legislative document, which is copies of state statutes, it has the number 401 at the top on page one. This is, these are the key FOA provisions in Maine law. And the benefit we have, if you look at this statute, is some extraordinarily clear guidance from the state legislature, which is not always the case with laws. Legislatures often make things somewhat confusing for us. But here, the legislature has been quite clear. They say in state, "The legislature finds and declares that public proceedings exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the legislature that their actions be taken openly and that records of their actions be open to public inspection and their deliberations be openly conducted." It's pretty hard to misunderstand what that means. The legislature is clearly saying and believes that open proceedings benefit the public. Whether it's the city council or the school board, we all benefit by having those proceedings conducted out in the open. That's clearly what the legislature wants. As they said about this, there are successor laws we'll go through. But I want you to have this overall thought in mind. As the courts in Maine have interpreted the FOA, they have universally read the intentions of the legislature for open proceedings and open records broadly. Correspondingly, there are exemptions in the statute which allow for some matters to be done in private. Often, you'll go into executive sessions, right? That's an exemption. There are several exemptions in the law, and I have the law in the packet for you. But understand that those exemptions are going to be read by the courts narrowly. So overall, the intention of the legislature is for open proceedings. The court will honor that as much as it can. And in those cases where a party wants or claims an exemption, courts tend to look at those exemptions very narrowly, because they want to default to openness if possible. So that's your, kind of your guide stone as you move forward, that the default position is almost always open meetings, open records, and that exemptions are going to be very hard to get to, clearly have to be spelled out in the statute. If you aren't falling within it, you're likely not supposed to go there. So we have a clear expression from the legislature. Section 402 is the next statute. It gives you some general definitions. And I would point you to Section 2 Public Proceedings, Subpart C. And it defines public proceedings as any of the following: any board, commission, agency, or authority of any county, municipality, school district, or any regional or other political or administrative subdivision. It's that verbiage that ropes in both the school district and the city within the realm of the FOA, within its reach, within its grasp. It's that very language, 402-2C, because we are an element of the state, a municipality, and of course, the school district. So that means we're subject to the FOA. And no one's really reasonably arguing we're not. Just, just so you know, we're not all making it up. It's, it's there. I'm showing it to you. You can trust me. Sort of an interesting thing for a lawyer to say, but, but there it is. And that's why I'm telling, because it does exist, and we do have to follow it. There are subsequently additional definitions in that statute. Would tell us, for instance, on the next page, Section 3, it defines what a public record is. This is important, because when we argue what's within the reach of the public records, it's critical to know, how does the legislature define it? In most cases, almost anything you do is going to be viewed as public. And the records that come from your proceedings are going to be viewed as public, again, unless an exemption exists for them. Schools have, so a typical one might be records involving juveniles. Those are going to be particularly important to the schools. Health records are confidential. Certain personal data can be confidential. Certain employee records can be confidential. But in large part, as you read Section 3, you'll see that most records are going to be open to the public, except, as they say in Subpart A, records designated as confidential, records that wouldn't be allowed to be discovered in a court proceeding, and then certain legislative papers. But in large part, again, the courts will review the intention as wanting most records to be open and public, and not exempted. Jumping ahead a few pages, we'll come to statute 403. They've told you what their intent is, and here, the legislature is making it clear. 403-1, "Except as otherwise provided by statute, all public proceedings must be open to the public, and any person must be permitted to attend." So let me just parse that out for you, because it's really particularly important language. Allowed to attend is different from participation. Okay? So the FOA and open records intends and desires for the public to be at our meetings, to see how we conduct business, so that they are understanding fully and are aware of what's going on. But that's not the same as having a right to participate in a meeting. Unless it's a public hearing, you, as your respective bodies, still control the conduct and undertaking of those proceedings. You can restrict the public from speaking unless it's a public hearing. You can set rules. If you have a time limit. So in this, the city, for example, has a specific time where we allow a certain amount of public comment on any matter that the public feels inclined to talk about. And that's something the city has established. But they're not a participant generally in your meeting. Certainly, no members come to the school board and generally vote. Those votes belong to you as the elected members. We're a representative form of government. And so while the legislature wants us to have open meetings, it's not to be confused with assuring that the public can participate in your meetings. They don't have that right. They do when there are public hearings, because that's the purpose of them. They're fact findings. So the public has a right to come and be heard. But most of your meetings aren't public hearings. Nonetheless, all of them are open to the public. When you have a meeting, you're duly obliged to record it. There has to be some sort of written or video recording of what you're undertaking, because not everyone can actually be here at every meeting. So we have these alternative forms where people can go back after the fact and see a meeting. Again, very important as a historical record, but also to fulfill the purposes of the legislature that people have access to their government officials and see what's going on. It wouldn't be a particularly wise process if you're, hey, you didn't make the meeting, so therefore, you can't know. So we, it has to be recorded. Deliberations of some bodies have to be recorded, particularly if decisions are being made, such as the planning board, the zoning board. Those actually are critical that they be written down, because they can be appealed from. So oftentimes, we actually have to have a written record of what occurred. Audiovisual recordings are allowed. Record management. Of course, you all know, if you move to the next statute, which I put in them, is 403B. This is a relatively new addition, which is post-COVID. So there was no remote policy, of course, pre, what, 2020, I guess, was the year we experienced COVID, that March. So this statute came along after that, and allows towns, the legislature under some emergency authority gave towns the ability to have meetings through alternate methods. That was to keep us going during, during the emergency. After the original legislative proclamation that came out, eventually, the legislature got to down, got down to business and codified this new provision. So let's see if they gave us the enactment date, if I kept that. But the purpose is to all, allow all towns, communities, boards, such as the school board and the city council, okay, the ability to have policies that allow for remote meetings. I can tell you that, for example, with the courts, my last two hearings have been by Zoom. So rather than driving up to Alfred, the court conducts the hearing over a Zoom. So it's become commonplace. Counsel, you seen? Oh, I was, I thought you were, please, if you have questions, please feel free to jump in. So if you look on page two of that statute, you'll see towards the end, there is something, it says "Section History," and it will say PL 2021, Chapter 290. So that kind of gives you the history. It was Chapter 290, which was enacted in 2021. So prior to that, we'd been operating under legislative kind of guidance on public meetings. But I would say, I would, I venture that most communities in Maine have enacted policies that allow for remote meetings. And I think actually, overall, it's probably been extremely beneficial. I know the courts are liking, and actually, some of the lawyers are not having to drive all the way to court are actually quite pleased. So nice that the weather's not so great. It's kind of nice to be able to watch your council and see how meetings go. So that's why I included that for you. The next statute is 406, requires public notice. So I mean, think about it. We pass state statutes that require open meetings. But if then we fail to let our citizens know the actual night, or day, or time, and places where we're meeting, then a public meeting law can be rendered ineffective. People could circumvent the purposes by playing a shell game with where the meetings are happening, or what time they're happening. Oh, you didn't know. Last week's city council meeting was going to be at nine in the morning at the fire station. Didn't we tell you that? Oh, we're really sorry about that. But hey, we had a great meeting. We served coffee and donuts, and the firemen were really friendly. And we voted the new budget for the year. It's got an $8 million increase. But sorry, you missed that meeting. It was open. So it's not enough to simply say we're going to have open meetings. It would be pointless if we didn't tell the citizens, when are we meeting? So again, seemingly obvious why it's there, but if we didn't do it, people would actually try something accidentally or on purpose it would happen. So you have this provision that says the public needs to get notice of the proceedings. And what can happen is if notice doesn't happen, it can render your meeting ineffective or invalid, mooting some of the work that you did. So you don't want to get to that point. So typically, the charter or your guiding documents will tell you how much time you're required to give to your various constituencies so that they have adequate notice before a public meeting takes place. Not a line you want to get close to. You want to err always on the side of caution, provide extra notice, extra opportunity, as with anything related to the FOA. Err on the side of caution. Section 408A. So as most of you know, and a lot of people think of FOA, they just think of it as the right to go look at the records. I want to look at this. I want to look at that. Some people are using this for good ends. They're curious about something. They want to know about what was last year's budget. What's the tax rate this year? I'm trying to think of something for the school board. I don't deal with your records on a day-to-day basis, but I'm sure there are things citizens ask for that they're curious about. Superintendent, one?
Several things.
Several things. For all the good-natured citizens that have a real, genuine curiosity and desire to know how their local government works, there is the 1 in 50 citizen who is mischievous or of bad intentions. Perhaps it's even a smaller number than that. But there are people who can use the FOA to be abusive, that they just, it can be seen as punitive, because they will submit a request that is onerous, requires hours and hours of research to compile a record or answer a question. We are, all of us are obligated to try to provide information to the public when asked. But there are, like most things, parameters. The legislature allows the citizens access, but again, it's guided by reason and certain rules. And those are set out in Section 408. In large part, typical citizen inquiries that don't require the city or the school department to create a new record, in other words, if it's just a record that already exists and it's usual and typical form, if it can be produced shortly, within a little reasonable time window, which is now viewed, used to be viewed as an hour, but now is viewed as two hours, then you have a duty to turn that over to the citizen without fee. You can charge 10 cents a copy, but you don't charge for the time to do the research and find the record, or records. If the records aren't in a form that's normally produced, and it's going to take you time and effort to transcribe, transpose, or compile them in such a way that you get what the citizen needs, then the city can charge, and the school department can charge up to $25 an hour for all time over two hours. If the cost of that work is going to exceed four hours, in other words, can cost more than $100, you can insist that the person seeking the records prepays you. So if the costs are estimated to be $100 or more, you can insist that the party prepay before the city undertakes the work, which is usually a wise policy, because a lot of people will make extremely people will make extremely onerous, burdensome requests. They don't realize how burdensome they are unintentionally. Most people are not doing it out of ill will, but they don't realize that this could be 10, 15 hours of work. And when they're told that, and they're told that the bill might be $100, $200, $400, that can send them or cause them to reconsider the request. So it is a balance of interests. The statute is what typically you'd call a balance of interest. The public has an interest in seeing records, but the state legislature and the courts recognize that these requests can't overburden the public officials whose job is day-to-day to help manage the city. So we don't want to, while we're serving one end, impair good government on the other end. So this statute has balancing language, and over time, it's changed a bit. The legislature hears from the public and says, hey, we think this is an issue. We need to change this. So the statute's been changed a few times over the years, but works pretty efficiently, and most lawyers understand how it works. And I think in our case, the city clerk is the lead FOA official, and she's well-versed in how this works, and immediately sends a request out to the appropriate departments, including IT, to produce the records, if we can, efficiently for the citizen, with the goal being you want to turn them over relatively quickly. Again, the goal is openness if possible. Lastly, I've included Chapter 410, which is violations, because to not honor and comply with the FOA is actually a civil offense in the state of Maine. We can be fined and get a slap from the courts. I've actually had a call from the Attorney General's office. They have a whole person up there designated as a FOA expert. She's a very bright lady, very polite, very nice to talk to. And if she gets a call, they will follow up with us, and they will say, well, Saco, we agree or we disagree with something that you're looking at. Because they, nobody in the state wants to file claims against the city, and I'm sure the same would be true of the school department. But sometimes it's just simply disagreement about what's obligated, what has to be done. So in those cases, the citizen can contact the Attorney General's office, and we've had cases, at least twice, where the Attorney General's office, AAG Keel T, has reached out to us, and we've been able to work through it. But it's important that all public officials know that they have a duty. They have a duty to comply with the statute, and they risk this penalty. The other thing is if you violate certain statutes, you can unwittingly undo the work you were trying to do. So for instance, if you have a meeting, you take a vote, but you failed to notice the meeting, you're essentially going to render that vote pointless. So that can cause significant damage to the city, to the people involved in the matter that you're voting on. So you want to be careful, like most matters. Saco, at least in my time here, has been blessed with public officials who take their duties seriously and have operated with a high level of ethical standards and intentions. Very, I can't recall right off the top of my head, of an official acting inappropriately. I'm sure if I thought about it at length, I could find one or two examples, but there's just not been the case here. We don't always agree with the citizens on what needs to be done, but we always try to act in good faith here, and it's a testament to, you know, the city officials. And I'll say, you know, there's the old expression, the fish rots from the head down. The city has had good heads. We've had good mayors, good councils, good administrators, and good superintendents. By the way, I understand the superintendent has been recognized recently, and congratulations, Jeremy. I'm sure it was well-earned. And so we know our school board is being led by competent resources. So unlikely that we're going to be getting ourselves in trouble, but I point out that if you do think there's a question about a FOA matter or even an ethical matter, as I said every time I've been here, first turn to your colleagues. If you have any doubt, err on the side of caution. If you have any doubt, speak with one of your colleagues, one that's been serving in their position for a while. They're a tremendous resource. Second, if you think you're still not sure, talk with your main resources for the city council. That would be the city administrator. For the school board, that would be the superintendent. These are people who are trained, highly capable, and they will be able to provide guidance. If that step fails, they have resources of attorneys. Thank you, Phil. So with the school board, I've worked with your counsel, Bill Stockmeyer. He's an outstanding attorney, extremely experienced. So he'll be able to answer any question you have, believe me. And for all of you on the council, I certainly would welcome any inquiry that you have. I've got five minutes, so let me run you briefly over to the ethics part of this. Any questions about FOA? Usually I give you two minutes on FOA and the rest on ethics, so I kind of, I'm glad we went through that. Look, on ethics, I've given you first a copy of this. This is something I didn't realize last year, but I've got a hold of it now. The council has enacted a policy, ethics policy, which I would describe as a sort of a high-level overarching aspirational document. It sets goals on what it expects of its public officials. It's not expressly saying do or don't. It's more just a high-level discussion of what our goals are, that we want public officials who act in the best manners possible, ethically, for the purposes of serving the public. I, the drafter of this, I think, did an excellent job, and I counsel you to all, take a couple of minutes when you have an opportunity and read it. I think it's great that Saco has publicly stated that ethics matter. I mean, it didn't exist back a few years ago, and I always would come and say, you know, we ought to think about enacting an aspirational message, something that says what we believe in. And so I think as the council, you did a wise job, and the city official that drafted it, I had nothing to do with drafting it. I think I looked at it, but I didn't draft it. And I think it was Emily, I think it was Emily who did. But I think it's a testament to the city that we have a statement that we put out to the public that says, this is what we believe in in terms of ethics and standards. It's what we expect to live by. The citizens that vote for you and elect you, they're your customers, and they want to be treated like good customers and understand that the party they're dealing with, whether it's a business or their government, is going to act in a high standard. And so I commend the council for enacting this. I've given you a couple of documents I worked on and put together. I updated the ethics codes. Bottom line with ethics is you will know when you're getting close to the line. It's not a surprise. You'll feel it, you'll know it. There's usually very little question. There can be some opaqueness, but you'll know in your heart whether you're up to the line. The best rule is if you have even the slightest connection to something, direct or indirect, pecuniary, or family, or interest, or conflict, disclose it. In almost all cases, disclosure resolves matter, resolves matters. And then don't vote on it, abstain. At that point, once you've done that, you've essentially inoculated yourself. You don't want to be criticized. It's almost hard to pull back, even if you think, so for instance, there's a 10% rule that says, look, if you don't have 10%, you don't really have a violation. I would not rely on that sort of safe harbor. The public just isn't going to see it that way. They're going to think, if you have an interest, you voted on something that's going to benefit your spouse directly, but you're only 10% owner, they're just not going to look at it that way. Just don't go there. It's not worth it. It's just not worth it. Keep in mind that it's almost always a no-win if you're in that situation. If there's appearance of conflict, people are just going to be critical, and it's just not worth it. There are state criminal laws that could affect you that relate to ethical conduct that, so that certain public officials, things you can't do, so you can get yourself in criminal trouble if you violate these rules. So those I certainly attached for you so you can see what they are. We have a city code, which mirrors a state law, and I provided the state law, which talks about direct and indirect conflicts of interest. It talks about the 10% rule. My advice is don't, just don't go there. It's just not, err on the side of caution. Like FOA, if you have any question, talk to your resources, which are your board members, the superintendent or the administrator, or talk with the lawyers. You know, it can't be said enough that if you bring it to public attention, you disclose it, you're almost always going to be all right, particularly then if you don't vote on it. In some cases, the board that you're sitting on may say, we don't view it as a conflict. We appreciate your disclosing it, but we're okay. You go forward. Great. Then you've clearly satisfied the board, you've done what you could, and you're still free yourself to abstain if you like. But rarely do I get an ethical question in my office, because I think you all pretty much understand and have a good grounding of what is and what isn't proper. Several of you I know have recently been reelected. Many of you have served multiple terms, so you already know this. You've got a handle on what's required. But to the extent a question does arise, I'm happy to help if I can, and I know Bill Stockmeyer, if he were here, would say the same thing. And keep in mind, an ounce of prevention is the pound of cure. So we'd rather have you come and ask us if there's any doubt, because we don't want to have to be with a dustpan sweeping up the broken glass later. So please feel free to talk to us. It won't take long. We don't bite, and so we, mostly we want to help. If I can answer any questions or?
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Solicitor Murphy?
Thank you all for your time, then.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, next up on the joint meeting is an update on the land for new sale.
Okay, good evening, everybody. There are several items that I want to update you on this evening, as I thought we would use this as an opportunity to just bring a few matters in front of the city council and board together. A lot of them we've talked about on the board level, and I've written you guys a memo that I gave each of you so that I don't have to read it word for word and that everybody can follow along. But I'll just briefly go through some of the items that are there. First and foremost, all of you are very aware of a situation that occurred on November 15th with an active shooter hoax in one of the other schools in York County. And while we were extremely fortunate that it was a hoax, it gives an opportunity for a school or any organization to kind of practice a situation in real time. And first and foremost here, I just, I can't thank Chief Clements enough for his communication during that situation, as we were back and forth on the phone, and then we're able to have follow-up conversations about how we can always improve and think about the volume of communication that comes in during those days. But as an administrative team, we really tried to reflect upon how do we prepare ourselves in our schools and our communities? If in case this was something that we were dealing here, and there are a bunch of bullet points that we've listed about additional trainings, review of our plans, how we collaborate, communicate, examine additional software that can be used to help with the communication process, and then just really fine-tuning any emergency plans that you may have, thinking about evacuation sites. And as superintendents, those of, whether it be Sanford or in Gardner or in Brunswick, as superintendents, we spend some time listening to those who are involved in one way versus us involved in another way, to think about all of the things that happened in those communities and what the response was, and how we make sure that we are thoughtful and plan for any of the things that could happen somewhere else. So that's been a great learning experience for us. School construction. We continue to meet quite regularly with the Department of Education to move forward on the project, and we are at the point where the Saco School Department has endorsed the educational specifications, which serves as a summary of priorities for the vision for a new school. This is a standard document that the DOE makes you fill out that kind of lays out some of the program piece, that helps paint that picture of what would be in the school, whether it be for classrooms, programming, et cetera. It also gives us an opportunity for the things that we believe in that may not necessarily fall within that prescribed square footage or funding formula or rules that they have to help us argue why we believe something would be important for our community that may be slightly different or out of what they have traditionally done in the past. Site requirements. We have had, worked with two appraisal companies, and we hope to have the appraisals within the next couple of weeks for those. One of them, we're actually hoping to receive this week. As you know, the Department of Education takes the average of two land appraisals for what they will cover for the cost. I also believe that we've had some really good discussions about what the city is bringing to the table in this, with hopefully a couple of pieces of property to add to what we would need to buy, and they seem very receptive because in some situations, the Department of Education for a project our size could be looking at purchasing a much larger block of land, and this is actually smaller than what we'd be quad for. So we want to try to be able to get as much funding as possible. We've had a pre-scope meeting with the DOT, was held on 10/31, for traffic counts have been completed. Traffic motion permit application is in process. There's been wetland studies, environmental studies, boundary surveys, have all, all of that work has been started to help move this forward, this project forward. There are some next steps on the confirmation of public water, sewer, and gas, review things with the city planner, fire, and police, and then review with the Maine Department of Environmental Protection and Army Corps of Engineers, some of the findings. As you have, we have discussed several times, we've talked about our new neighbors that are with us in our community, and a majority of those students have completed their registration by the end of October. We see some slight turnover from time to time as families move or get permanent housing. You'll see new families move in. We meet weekly with the Department of Education and some folks at the hotel to try to keep things on top of things and up to speed of what's going on, and then looking at the professional development for our staff. I think there's probably a sense that this, these students could be with us for at least another year, and so we are trying to plan with the Department of Education about what steps we need to take to continue our professional growth and anything moving forward financially and budgetarily. Student support, as we all know, is a very challenging time out there for several families, and our school department has worked with outside organizations, our resiliency coordinators, our social workers, our nurses throughout the course of the year. And some of the highlights, clothing drives, socks for seniors have been done, backpacks weekly with school supplies, food, all of those things go home each and every week for our kiddos, as there's a tremendous amount of need that occurs in our community. A collaboration with Saco Steam to provide $2,000 worth of donations for students in need, and started a 501(c)(3) aid for Saco kids, which helps us with some of the grant writing and outreach for certain things, to pull on those resources as homelessness and movement is really at an all-time high, and so many families need resources. And sometimes it can be really things that are kind of outside the purview of the typical school piece, but sometimes families just need help with making sure they can get their kid to school the next day, which requires gas or transportation, or has enough food to make it through the weekend, and we really try to assist with those pieces. I provided you a brief overview of what our student count was for the upcoming year, and when we look at some of our subgroups here, currently, we have 25 homeless families that are active, with 15 historical families over time. That does not include any of our students who are considered homeless that are at the hotel property. Our ML students, which is our formerly, we'd call, be known as an ELL, so multilingual, is a total of 160 students. That's plus 90. That's plus 96 students from last year. We currently have 74 students at Thornton Academy that attend the vocational center in Bedford. Our special education count is 501 students, and our economically disadvantaged percentage is 22.71%. As you know, last year, we worked hard on the budget piece, and I just wanted to provide you some unaudited numbers at this point. Last year, because we had done some planning the prior year before with how we would handle the excess revenue that came into the state, we ended the end of the school year with a $1.9 million fund balance, which allowed us to repay the $1 million that the school department was in the hole with the city, so that has been wiped clean. We used $275,000 in the budget to reduce taxes, which leaves us an unaudited fund balance of $693,000 that we'll be able to apply to any future or upcoming expenses. So put ourselves into a pretty good place moving forward. Capital improvements at SMS, that was something we talked a lot about in the budget process last year, and we've been able to make a lot of really good steps at SMS, and thankful for the support of the school board and the city council on that. It's that the new furniture was ordered and installed for students and teachers, and we were actually quite surprised because that was all finished by October. And based off ordering and all of the pieces that come with that, we felt really good about having that in place. We are now turning our attention with some of the remaining funds of quoting and ordering new furniture for the SMS library and staff rooms, those are rooms that need some attention. Ordering, because of the way that the hot lunch program has worked for public schools with the full reimbursement from the federal government during the COVID times and now with the state, we have a large fund balance in the hot lunch program that can only be put towards hot lunch improvements. So this takes an opportunity for us to look at all of the furniture that we currently have in the SMS cafeteria, and an opportunity to replace that using those funds. We've had instructions from the DOE and the Hot Lunch Services that typically they only wanted school departments to carry three to six months' worth of operating expenses, and they've allowed schools because of the COVID and the change to build those up, but they've asked us to start thinking about a process to making those go down. And so we've started to look at the equipment in our facilities, especially at SMS, and furniture there. We were able this summertime to address the painting and painted all hallways at SMS. And if you walk in through the front door, you definitely can see the difference. The next piece that we'll be looking at is the schedule to get into classrooms, so we can get that work done, kind of having a color scheme that matches throughout the school so that as you look at repairs, you know, our facility staff is not looking at a palette of 40 colors, but trying to get that into a more manageable so that we can repair things. Also, as part of some of the safety work, we are starting to look at that entrance way, to think about how you can enter the gym, and if you've ever been there at pickup time, how students kind of mingle with the public during that. I think that's a safety concern that we'd like to address, that we think we can do for a very reasonable cost. We were able to replace two sections of the roofs this summer, and we're hoping to replace at least another three sections during this summer, if not more, as we look at the money that's in this budget, whatever, we might be able to do, hoping that we can take a big chunk to finish that piece up. We've installed key swipes and new internal security cameras. Security cameras will be something that we need to continue to refine so that we have more coverage, because obviously during any situation, you're going to want to be able to have your eyes on your school building. Installed water balder or filling stations throughout the school, and then also looking at the softball dugouts. Last year, on the front field, we're really in disarray, and so we were able to work with parks and wrecks and get those painted and replaced. And we'll look at the ones out back so that when we have visitors there for our athletic events, they can see the pride that we take in those facilities. So I would entertain any questions about this or anything else that you'd like to ask, but it's kind of an overview of where we are on several items.
Thank you for that overview. A lot of good information, a lot of good movement going, especially happy to hear with the SMS improvements. Sounds like it's going right along. So do we have any questions for Superintendent Ray or the school board members? Okay, not seeing any. Do we have any questions for the council from the school board? Okay, I'm not seeing any on that either.
Jody?
Yes?
One of the things I do think that Brian and I, I'll email you to get together, think about those upcoming meeting dates, as I know that we have some of those coming out. It'd be great to get some of those planned and on the calendar before all of us get extremely busy with budget and pull those together, so.
Great, and I know that we've also had discussions with the upcoming meetings about trying to schedule it on kind of a workshop format so that we have items available prior to the meeting, so that way, school board members and council members have an idea, can get together some questions, discussions. So if you have any ideas going forward with the meetings, we'll get those added as well. Okay, so that would conclude our joint meeting with the school board. Good evening, everybody. Welcome back. I'd like to call the order the city council meeting for the city of Saco on Monday, December 19th, 7:21 PM. All members are present, with the exception of Mayor Doyle. And will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and equal with liberty and justice.
Okay, there is no general items tonight. Any committee correspondence to council? Councilor Hatch.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McPhail. I have three committees to report on, I'll try to be brief. Tuesday, December 6th, I actually attended two committee meetings. The first was the Energy and Sustainability Committee. Just a general comment, the committee, which is comprised of staff, city staff, and several volunteer citizens, it's a very engaging committee. It's one I enjoy attending to see the dialogue that goes on between staff and citizens. But they, in general, are continuing to find ways to minimize energy consumption and reduce the city's carbon footprint, and some of the ideas that get percolated at that meeting are quite interesting. The second meeting I attended on the 6th was Age Friendly Saco. Just wanted to note one particular issue. They completed a recent survey of their membership, and on-demand transit, primarily to doctor's appointments, was the number one item that was viewed as the most necessary service. And I only bring that up because they will be, Age Friendly will be bringing a plan before the council during the budget process. As you may recall, we did a temporary funding to keep that program going. We might need another year of funding for that to keep it going, but it's been extremely, extremely successful. There's also a plan for a delivery of a Valentine's Day meal to about 350 folks, elders and shut-ins. So that's in process, as well as a St. Patrick's Dinner dance at the Elks Club on March 18th. I would encourage my council colleagues to find their dancing shoes and get ready. And then I met with the Bitford-Saco Door to Beach Transit Committee on the 8th. There's a continuing process to improve the financial management systems within the organization, which are going to be very, very productive. Recruitment and retention of CDL bus drivers remains a challenge, which actually affects the ability to keep our routes running. So again, I make a plea to the public, if anybody has the inclination to drive a bus, please reach out to BSOOB Transit. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other committee correspondence to council? Councilor again?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Last week, I had my last meeting as the Historic Preservation Commission liaison before I turned those duties over to Councilor Hatch. And in addition to the usual business of the meeting, we had a presentation from Peter Scontress, and of course, you all know the credentials of Mr. Scontress, who's been doing some work with the Historic Preservation Society or Historic Commission in Bedford, I forgot the exact name, forgive me for that, concerning the possible erection of a statue or some sort of commemorative statue of the Native American leader Squando, who was a vital and a very interesting part of Saco's history in the latter half of the 17th century. And it was a freewheeling conversation, just trying to get it on the city's radar, but the gist of the conversation was, while there was interest on our friends over in Bedford, there is a lot of folks who want to make use of the land that was intended for the statue, which was Mechanics Park. So the idea by bringing it to us was, well, if Bedford is interested, but they're not doing anything, perhaps Saco might be interested in something that's really part of our joint heritage and history. Just, I figured I'd put it out there just to get on everybody's radar, because Mr. Scontress came to this HPC as sort of point people on this, though, but they have no statute authority on this sort of thing. So this would be something that would be up to us as the council as a whole, if it's something that we are interested in moving with going forward. But our initial conversation is available online in terms of what we talked about, but just basically putting the idea out there. And truth be told, it seems to be something that is worth looking for, because it's a part of our heritage and history that any school kid would know some of the particulars of it, though, but as part of our everyday heritage, that kind of is overlooked, and something that I think might be worth looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other correspondence? Okay, not seeing any. Move on to public comment. We do not have any members of the public signed up. If there are any members who wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, address, and three minutes. Okay, not seeing anybody wishing to be recognized?
Men or women?
Yep, please step forward.
My name is Patrick Conlin, resident of Bedford. I know you're going to hear from the BPAC, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advocacy Committee, or Advisory Committee, sorry, in a little while about the bike share thing, but I just wanted to kind of introduce myself, and I've been going to their meetings. They're doing some really great work. But I also felt a need in Bedford and Saco to start an advocacy organization to advocate for better walking, biking transit, safer streets. So I started a group called Bike BS. BS stands for Bedford-Saco. And one of the things that I talked about with the committee was having a bicycle ride. And not many people are out riding bikes in this weather, but it's something to think ahead to the warmer weather. We talked about maybe trying to have a ride that would incorporate both Bedford and Saco, get people out, maybe have, hopefully have like a police escort through both cities so it can be really safe and very family-friendly, get people out to ride who might not normally ride because of fear of cars and what have you. But we talked about it, and everybody on the committee seems really supportive of it. I'd like to call it the Tour de BS, which is kind of a takeoff on Tour de France, but again, Bedford-Saco. So I just wanted to put it out there and kind of put it on your radars. I'm going to speak with folks in Bedford about it as well, and then, you know, we'll see what we can do. But, okay, that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would you be able to provide more information at a later date when you have that set?
Yeah, I'm going to definitely speak with Bedford's council and, you know, try to get a feel there and then come back with you guys and, you know, kind of try to open the communication between the two.
Thank you.
Yeah, so my name is Chris Newt, and I'm on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And I just wanted to vouch for the fact that we have actually been talking about that, and it is something that we kind of wanted to put on our agenda for this coming year. And I didn't know how to go about, I guess, even starting the process of asking for support in terms of the coordination that he was talking about between the two cities. in terms of the coordination that he was talking about between the two cities. But it's definitely something that we'd like to talk about going forward. And I guess that's about all we have at this point, but it's on the radar, and we'll definitely get more information as soon as we come up with it.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing any others. Moving on to Item 7, Approval of the Minutes for December 5th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-6-0. Item number eight, consent items. We have two items on the consent. A is reappointment of Michelle Hughes as the Register of Voters, and B to approve the January and February meeting dates. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Johnston?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes, 6-0. Now moving on to Item number nine, action items. First action item is the final reading, amendments to the public notice and review procedures of Saco subdivision site plan and zoning ordinance, and that is Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Members of the public regularly express concerns about the public notice procedures for planning board review of development permit applications. Planning staff administer procedures and timelines that are established in the state statutes and local ordinance, which may be inadequate because, one, technological and cultural shifts limit the types of information people obtain from newspapers, rendering the related publication requirements outdated and ineffective. Two, postal delivery of paper notices may be delayed, or the addressing information available to staff may be incorrect. Three, the radius used for mailings may exclude persons who wish to be informed of an application and related hearings. Four, the requirements differ between application types, causing confusion for staff and for members of the public who are notified for one application type but not for another. And five, requirements may be missing from Saco's revised ordinances. Further, recent events illuminated a potential conflict between review timeline requirements for determining completeness of subdivision applications, 30-day maximum, and scheduling planning board reviews subdivisions 28-day minimum. The proposed amendments will make the public notice procedures consistent for all applicable application types, which will increase the minimum timelines for mailed notices and will add an onsite signage requirement for certain applications to help inform interested parties who may not receive formal notices. They will also correct the review timeline issues in Saco's subdivision ordinance. After discussing these amendments during two workshops and a public hearing, Saco's planning board voted 4-0 during the October 18th, 2022 meeting to forward a positive recommendation to city council for the proposed amendments. I move to approve the final reading and adopt the proposed amendments to the public notice and review procedures of Saco's subdivision site plan and zoning ordinances.
Second.
Motion has been read by Counselor Purdy, second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. When this first came to us as a new business item, we had talked about changing the two 13 days to make them all 14 days. Unfortunately, you have to go to follow the hyperlink in the packet to get to the December 5th to get you to the document, the exhibit item. Is there a statutory reason why we didn't change it to 14, so that it would be consistent throughout the process?
We do have Assistant City Planner, Shannon Justholm, who should like to come up and maybe address that.
Yes, hello.
Hello.
Could you please repeat your question?
Yes, so if you look at Item Exhibit 2, which you have to go back to the December 5th packet in order to see the document, when this first came to us, I had the question of why are they all 14 except for two of them that are 13? And I wasn't sure if that was a required 13 days, or can it be 14 so that the document is consistent, rather than adding a layer, one additional layer of a difference between notice?
You'll have to give me just one second, so I can pull it up to look at it as well.
It's on page 36.
So I'm not sure why it wasn't changed to 14. Just looking at it in the chart, Notice of Hearing, City Hall, that's when we post the printed copies of the agendas in the different bulletin boards. I'm unaware if there's some sort of state policy that requires 13. I would think that it would be all right to amend it to 14.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to put in a motion to amend zoning amendment map section, Notice of Hearing, City Hall, to 14 days, and zoning amendment text to 14 days. That way, the document is consistent.
Second.
Motion has been made for an amendment by Counselor Archer, seconded by Counselor Johnston. Any questions or discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call, vote on the amendment. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes, 6-0. Back to the main motion, main motion only. Any other questions or concerns or discussion? Not seeing any. Roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Main motion passes, 6-0. Okay, that now takes us to Action Item B, Public Hearing, Chapter 81, Request to Purchase City-Owned Property, 24 Lincoln Road, and that is Counselor Purdy.
Thank you. Garrett Harmon, owner of the property located at 41 Lincoln Road, Lot 37-1 of Tax Map 101, submitted a request for the planning board and city council to consider selling the neighboring parcel to the southwest, 24 Lincoln Road, Lot 35 of Tax Map 101, to him, so he can preserve the open space abundant in his property. The planning board found that the subject property lacks potential for public uses and voted 5-0 to forward a positive recommendation to city council during their November 15th, 2022 meeting. Section 81-2C of Saco City Code states that council shall determine the method of sale if the council decides to offer any city-owned property for sale. Regardless of the method of sale, notice shall be sent to all the butters. Saco's assessor believes that the property was acquired by the city in the late 1970s or early 80s because of a failure of the previous owners to pay property taxes. Section 81-2D of Saco City Code states that proceeds from the sale of a tax-acquired property shall be applied to the balance of the unpaid taxes and any unpaid fees, interest, and lien fees for the property. Any additional funds received will be deposited as directed by the city council. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion has been made to approve the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn?
Berman.
I'm sorry. Counselor Berman? Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, motion to open the public hearing passes 6-0. Public hearing is now open. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak? Please step up to the podium, state your name and address. Okay, we are not seeing anyone wishing to be recognized. Counselor Purdy?
I move to close the public hearing and schedule a final reading for January 9th, 2023.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, a motion to close the public hearing and set the final reading for January 9th, 2023, 6-0. Okay, that now takes us to Item C, First Reading, Amendment to Saco Code, Chapter 112, General Assistance Program Appendixes. And that is Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Each year, main municipal association presents municipalities with new appendixes for their city ordinance, which need to be reviewed and adopted. The city of Saco hereby approves the first reading of amendments to the Saco Code, Chapter 112, General Assistance Program Appendix A through H, and further moves to set the public hearing for January 9th, 2023.
Okay, motion has been read. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor. I've already reached out to the city administrator with a number of questions regarding this ordinance. And just for the benefit of the public, I want to point out that these levels are recommended by the USDA and then the state of Maine, based on the cost of living in the region. City of Saco is flanked by two municipal districts, the city of Portland Municipal District, which comes down to Old Orchard Beach, and a southern Maine Municipal District that includes Kittery, South Berwick, and York, putting us in a bit of an island that provides substantially lower benefits for general assistance. These benefits can be changed by council if the actual cost of housing and/or food is higher than their suggested minimums, and I find it unlikely that housing and food could be acquired in the city of Saco for substantially less than Old Orchard Beach, Scarborough, York, Kittery, and South Berwick. And so I've asked for additional information on the cost of living in Saco, the available of rent, and what they call a market basket survey, to understand the cost of actually purchasing food here in the city of Saco, so that we could consider adopting higher minimum levels for general assistance, such as those for the Portland Municipal District, which again, comes down to our border at Scarborough and Old Orchard Beach. Without that kind of information, I can't in good conscience vote for these lower levels for our citizens. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, along those same lines as Counselor Berman, I think the last two years, I've mentioned that I think that we should be moving towards the Portland limits or minimums. I think that anybody that has recently tried to look for an apartment in this market in particular, I have definite concerns about the housing maximums. Just today, I went on looking for, you know, Saco apartments, and right across the street here on Cuts, you will not find a one-bedroom for under 1,500, and they're really closer to 1,800. So I don't know how, you know, if we're really doing a service to people that are struggling, that are in need of general assistance, if we're adopting York County's HMFA's at 1065, clearly that's going to leave quite a large gap for anybody that's in need of that assistance. So I am definitely in support of, you know, the study that needs to be done to adopt the higher limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call, vote. Set the public hearing for January 9th, 2023. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, 6-0. That now takes us on to Item 10, New Business. We have three items. First up is the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee presentation, and I believe we have Bob Hanlon coming up to present.
Greetings, everyone.
Good evening.
Actually, Jason Day is going to take this away and run with it as soon as we get our IT portion figured out.
There's a USP one here, if you need that one instead.
Much better, thank you.
Should we click? Great. Good thing this is full, probably. Is there anything further that we need to do?
That's okay.
Well, that's... Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us here today to talk on bike share. My name's Jason Day. I'm here with the Saco Bicycle-Pedestrian Committee, along with fellow members here that came out in force. We were approached a little over a year ago, I think, by Mayor Doyle to basically establish a perspective on bike share potentials for the city of Saco. That was it. There were no additional parameters. So what we undertook was to, A, figure out what we were going to do and what we were going to deliver, and then try to figure out how to communicate that and determine what our next steps were. So as far as our scope, we purely tried to look at the feasibility of a bike share program within Saco's borders, regardless of who was running that program, how that program was delivered, what the implementation was, where costs were coming from. We left all that to the side, because it's really not sort of, that's a stage-two or a stage-three conversation, and we really needed to make sure that we focused on the stage-one, which is understanding if Saco could support bike share, just in terms of infrastructure and use, et cetera. We made sure to not provide any recommendations on vendors, on implementation methods, or bike share styles. There are many different forms out there. So, you know, I think most of you are probably somewhat familiar with what bike share is. You know, bike share is a method of, it's a service that provides bikes and other micro modal devices to, for hourly, daily, you know, monthly, weekly, or per-time slot to be able to use that device, to, you know, travel to another location where you can either dock the bike or bring it back to the original location. You know, bike share programs come in many different organizational models. Different entities have found solutions to implementing and funding and managing bike share programs that align with that specific area's resources. So there's a wide variety of bike share programs across the US that have very wildly different implementation models. You know, when we think about national bike share use... You know, when we think about national bike share use, you know, a hundred million trips have been taken on a bike share program since 2010. Two hundred and three cities as of 2021 have a bike share or scooter share program, and fifty percent of riders reported that they used shared micro mobility or bike share or scooter share to connect to other transit options. So we really think about sort of that last mile connection of getting to transit to be able to then to accomplish getting to the destination that you're looking for. You know, there's some big benefits to bike share. A, it is an active form of transportation, it's been shown to reduce stress and improve general well-being. North Americans gained almost twelve point two million hours of additional physical activity through shared micro mobility. There is some note that there are some informal studies that show that the rate of helmet usage or helmet wearing is lower for bike share programs, but I'm going to speak to that a little bit later in the presentation to show that why that might not be a significant issue in terms of safety for the city of Saco. Additionally, there are reduced emissions, you know, in 2020, you know, bike share trips offset approximately twenty-nine million pounds of CO2 emissions, and thirty-six percent of shared micro mobility trips in North America replaced a car trip. So, you know, that really speaks to people having alternatives, that they're going to use them to travel and to get to their destinations. And then sort of the big one is economic. You know, research has found that people who bike spend more in local shops than those who drive to those same areas. You know, recent research shows e-scooter programs increased unplanned spending at local shops. The study found that nine hundred and twenty-one dollars per scooter could be attributed to increased spending at those local shops. It was like a point six percent increase in sales overall. So, and that's per scooter, so if there were, you know, ten scooters, then that's nine thousand dollars to those local area. So it's just, you know, it's an interesting sort of figure to think about. And in another study during the tourism season, tourists accounted for one-third of ridership, which I think is especially prescient to Saco being that that's, you know, we'd likely have a, if we were to implement one, it would be a seasonal program, and we'd likely see a lot of tourist traffic utilizing those resources. There are some barriers to bike share. So, cost, right? The bulk of bike share programs are not self-sustaining, they require an investment from generally municipalities, private, you know, funding, government funding, grants, organization models, strategic partnerships are all super important factors to offsetting those costs. There are some safety and infrastructure issues. You know, research shows that a lack of safety and bicycling infrastructure has a significant impact on overall bike share adoption, and, you know, there is the risk of low adoption in an area when you introduce bike share. So, you know, recommendations to increase usage are primarily structural, infrastructure improvement, incentive programs, awareness and safety campaigns, expansion to neighborhoods and trails, and increasing the time that users can use the bike, lower cost, and then providing more electric bikes, especially in recent years. That has significantly lifted the amount of people that are able to access bike share that may not do so otherwise. Thinking about safety further, you know, I think that's probably going to be, for a lot of municipalities, that's their primary concern coming out the gate, and it's important to understand the current safety record of existing bike share systems. So to date, the rates of injury crashes have been typically lower than users just on their own bikes. Some of this can be attributed to that safety in numbers, because there are more people biking in a specific area that has bike share, then they're more likely, cars are more used to seeing them, and riders are more used to being out and understanding the rules of the road. There's exposure to bicycle education and rules of the road components. Many bike share programs have, you know, you install an app and you have to go through a safety sort of protocol check and make sure that you acknowledge that, that seems to have some level of impact. And then bike share, bicycles themselves have safety features, you're generally in a more upright position, the bikes aren't, they have generally a top speed, they're not geared very high as well, so people generally ride slower. It is worth noting, though, that most municipalities that have adopted bike share programs either had infrastructure in place for cyclists or increased investments into infrastructure as the bike share program developed, so that also has sort of benefits for safety as well. You can't just put like a bike share program in and just walk away from it, then you're likely not going to see some of these safety increases. So that was, we did a lot of that external research. We then did internal research to, for Saco itself. We put out a survey this summer, over five weeks, using Google Forms. We delivered it primarily through Facebook, through Saco-oriented groups, Saco Moms and Dads, Saco Community, as well as several cycling groups in the area. And we reposted the survey weekly just to make sure that we were trying to reach more people within those groups. But just note that this does mean that the survey data not, may not be a representative sample of Saco. You know, there are limitations to delivering surveys through Facebook, you know, there's lots of people not on Facebook, it appeals to a certain demographic, doesn't capture as many younger users either, and likely also doesn't capture as many of the tourists that are important factor, I think, in sort of this, you know, information and making decisions. We think that largely tourists would likely have, the data would skew a little bit differently. Additionally, we don't have any demographic information on those groups, so we, you know, we don't have demographics on who was completing the survey. All in all, we had two hundred and thirty-two total responses, and we got back some great data, I think, overall. This is, I'm going to just show you a few sample questions, show you some of the data that we have. So, you know, how likely is it that you would use a bike share program in Saco? You know, you have thirty percent of sort of respondents saying that they might, you know, use a bike share program, and I actually think for our city that doesn't necessarily have a big investment into cycling infrastructure currently, that that's actually a fairly positive number overall. And we're, and being introduced to something net new without additional information, that sort of thirty percent to be somewhat likely or above, I would see as a positive. What are the reasons you wouldn't use a bike share? So, you know, besides someone having a personal bike, which is the sort of biggest response, lack of safe places to ride and lack of bike infrastructure bubble to the top, this is a theme we saw again and again throughout the survey. And this one I threw in here because I find this particularly interesting in terms of when we think about transit throughout Saco, Old Orchard Beach, and Bedford, is what a combination of bus service and a bike share program together meet your transportation needs? And, you know, thirty-three percent, so one-third of respondents said that they could meet their transportation needs through the addition of a bike share program along with transit, which to me is a pretty important factor to consider, that that's a pretty large number overall, and I expected that this would be much lower just based on, you know, what we saw for other responses. So, you know, some key feedback for the open entries, I don't feel like the roads around me are safe for cycling. One-twelve and five are examples of roads that I don't feel safe to ride or on or cross with children. We desperately need more dedicated bike lanes throughout Saco and Bedford. Safety is by far my biggest concern, I am nervous of maneuvers such as making a left turn on a busy street like North Street. Street architecture will have to change before ordinary people will ride bikes very much, that emphasis is mine, and I called this out because often when we think of cyclists and cyclist infrastructure, we're thinking about people that cycle frequently, right, that have the full gear, are out riding their bikes and are comfortable, but when we talk about bike share and the community, these are people that are cycling maybe once in a while or don't cycle very much at all, right? That would be picking this up. And that is a very different feeling than when you're used to traffic versus when you're a brand-new rider in traffic, which can be terribly frightening. And I think Bob and Chris and myself, when they put in the new bike lanes on North Street, were relatively competent cyclists, and even we were a little uneasy with the traffic on North Street, people using North Street, the bike lanes as bypass lanes for turning traffic because they're not, so you don't have that dedicated. So we have to think about sort of the ordinary people that are going to be involved in cycling with using a bike share program. And I think the next one's important, too. We struggle to keep pedestrians safe in Saco, cars rarely stop at crosswalks, we need to address this problem first. So with that, with doing this research, you know, you know, according to Smart Towns and some other sources, the perception of rider safety has a huge impact on the viability of a bike share program and public perception. And according to the survey, seventy-two percent of the two hundred and thirty-two people surveyed state that they don't bike more often due to safety concerns. So out of people that we, you know, sent this to, safety was their primary concern across the board. You know, additionally, bike lanes and the knowledge of how those bike lanes connect together and connect to other transportation, you know, improve sort of the overall bike sharing performance if one's out there. And one recent study even points out a statistically significant relationship between the number of trips by bike share and the supply of bike lanes. For this reason, integrating bike share systems within networks of bike lanes, with networks of bike lanes, is key to increasing ridership and making bike share safe and desirable for users in Saco. Ultimately, we get to sort of the executive summary where we sort of landed as part of all of this, as part of this research, and I'm going to read this word for word just because I think it's important. Many factors point to this being an opportune time for bike share and bicycling in general to thrive in Saco. The ongoing changing demographics, expected growth with concentrations projected near downtown, and strong seasonal tourism are all indicators of potential bike share success. However, due to traffic volumes in the area, the general lack of bike lanes and infrastructure, and increased vehicle incident rates, a Saco-based bike share program may not be viable at this time and have more success after investments into cycling infrastructure have been completed. That is not to rule out implementation in the near future. The city of Saco has several strategic partners and initiative opportunities available to begin improving on bike infrastructure in the near term while aligning with the comprehensive plan, all of which would make bike share, a bike share program achievable while also increasing overall mobility within Saco over the next two to five years. So what does that mean? So how do we get from, getting there from here? You know, Saco has broad support for improving cycling infrastructure and safety for cyclists and pedestrians. As part of the Saco draft comp plan process, the community visioning project, cycling infrastructure-related improvements were a common theme, it's called out in the comprehensive plan multiple times. So as part of this process throughout the comp plan, improvements to cycling infrastructure is included specifically in policy four point five, connect the bicycle network to key locations and provide adequate bicycle parking. So a bike share program is really going to be dependent on this town making investments and actually aligning to the comp plan moving forward. And we, so we have some key next steps, what we're calling Safe Passage Saco. This is, A, number one, we need to increase our on-street painted bike lanes. You know, fundamental to a bike share program, Saco would need to increase the number of painted bike lanes on the city streets, although we would ideally have some form of physical delineation separating cyclists from vehicles, that's, you know, a huge win for safety if we can do that. And we put in that, you know, the city should revisit using raised pavement markers to help, you know, bridge that or provide that barrier. Even a painted bike lane can give a rider a sense of recognition and protection, so the city must do more to expand its network to provide that sense of community, or, sorry, that sense of security to potential bike share users. And again, I go back to North Street where, as a cyclist riding up and down North Street, if you, you know, those left-hand turns, if you're running north on North Street, people are using the bike lanes as bypass lanes. So as long as that continues to be a mixed use, it's not really a bike lane that's going to be seen as a safe option for riders and for, you know, pedestrians throughout. Additionally, you know, we need a safe route to the beach. Our largest asset is the oceanfront, it's primarily where if there was a bike share program in town, we, the, you know, BPAC's opinion is that connecting downtown to the beach would be the fundamental use of that bike share program. However, as it stands now, there's no good route for the average person to travel down to the beach without riding on the sidewalk, and then we get into issues between, mixed use between pedestrians and cyclists, which then impacts pedestrians further. Additionally, just putting in bike racks. You know, whether or not a bike share program is implemented, if we have very visible and more bicycle parking throughout the town, it's a low-cost way to show that there's some investment and sort of drive-up use of bike share, or, sorry, biking overall. Studies show a positive relationship between the density of bike racks in a given area and bike ridership. You know, fifteen percent of our survey respondents cited a lack of bicycle storage as one of the reasons why they don't ride their bikes, they don't know where to put their bike once they reach their destination. So we have a lot of partners and collaborators that we worked on as part of this, and also partners and collaborators that would be imperative to, you know, utilizing as we move forward, primarily the transit system. Transit has expressed an interest in managing bike share in the area, it might be a key partner, and they're uniquely positioned to execute a bike share program with, you know, all that they do throughout the tri-city area. And they are a natural and competent partner to this process, right? They understand transit, and I think that they would be a potential great bridge for us. Apex Youth Connection, they've communicated with UNE about an improved multimodal and are pursuing a bike rental program in downtown Bedford that involves students from UNE, UNE's bike share program. Portland, y'all may have heard, they're using Tandem and they're doing a pilot right now of bike share. It's essentially being, Tandem is offering Portland for free just for the pilot. They likely would not extend that to us just because of our size and a little bit more seasonality. However, Tandem does offer regional bike share, so there could be potentials for partnerships with Portland and surrounding towns to sort of expand into more of a regional model versus us, you know, sort of adopting it solely ourselves. Greater Portland Council of Governments, right, they've submitted the TODD Plan for development between Saco and Bedford, update that section of road in the middle district to increase bike lanes along there, so I think they might, would be a key component, especially for grants and some of those further development studies. Saco Bay Trails, Saco Bay Trails is working towards permanent trail networks as part of their trail expansion, and improvements to more accessibility so everybody can use the trail, and we had initial conversation with them, they are also open, open to discussing further and maybe using that as a way to bypass parts of ferry road for a direct connection to the beach. And then Bedford and Old Orchard Beach, they have, we've had several discussions with them as part of our ongoing committee meetings, and they're open to working further. Old Orchard Beach doesn't really have the resources right now, they're kind of just now getting involved, whereas Bedford is a little bit further along with UNE and Apex Youth. So again, some key partners that could help us if, you know, city councils decide to sort of further and pursue this. So that's a thank you. Want to open up, if there's any questions or if you have anything you want to ask?
Yeah, thank you, Jason. Any questions? Councilor Berman, then Councilor Hatch.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor. So I just want to acknowledge the amount of work that the BPAC put into this presentation. It's been many meetings and many months and back and forths and drafts and research and partner seeking, and you can see the results of that really tremendous amount of work in this, this presentation. There's lots of information, both about what Saco needs, about regional partners, about steps to move forward, really just an outstanding presentation, I'm sure very informative for everybody here, so, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor.
For that hard work. It's really useful. I'd also just like to point out, I think maybe to you and to the public, some of the benefits and really key things that you pointed out, right? And one of the impediments to bringing tourists into our town via public transit is that last mile problem. We have an Amtrak stop right here in our Saco Transportation Center, but when somebody gets off the train, then what? Right? And a regional bike share solves that then-what problem, and allows people getting off the train or buses to the Saco Transportation Center to then access our downtown businesses, our schools, the Eastern Trail, our beaches, our restaurants, our hotels, and wherever else they need. So as we envision the future of Saco and how we can create a more transit-oriented solution, that last mile problem is the hurdle, and this is one potential solution. And we need to wrap that in the context of the Declaration of Climate Emergency that Saco has made, the climate resiliency study that's currently underway, and our commitment to growing our economy and our community in an environmentally friendly manner. So that is the context I see for all of it and its utility. I also appreciate some of the challenges you've outlined, and bike lanes being one. I'm really proud that over the last year, Saco has painted its first, you know, bike lanes on roads, although as you point out, some are still mixed use. I notice Director Pat Fox is in the back, and I believe he has, you know, expressed a commitment to looking for additional bike lanes that can be painted as roads are redone in the future, and I really look forward to that. And one of my priorities on council is to really enhance climate-friendly, pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly transit in Saco, right? Traffic and speeding is one of the number-one complaints of our residents, and the more we can move people to bicycles, scooters, and pedestrians, the more we're going to solve it. I don't really have any questions, just want to say thank you. I think it's fantastic work, and I fully support it, and I really appreciate what you guys have done.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Hatch.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I just want to dovetail on Councilor Berman's accolades, but I want to come at it a little differently, and I am in support, I'm, I'm one of your casual bikers, but where I live, if I wanted to take a nice casual bike ride to Shaw's. to take a nice casual bike ride to Shaw's, I'd have to go out Route 5 or Route 112. And I just don't have the bravery in me to do that, because if I took Route 5, I'd be in one of Chelsea's trees, probably. So it opens up the discussion in my mind for the broader issue of infrastructure, which is a big, a big issue for me as a counselor in working with, with our planning department and our Public Works, who I really do think do, do a great job of trying to keep us focused on that. But I would bring up a point, just, just to highlight some of the challenges, and I, our, our new city planner is here this evening, so Emily, this one's for you. I was at the last planning board meeting, and we have a fairly robust requirement for new subdivision development to put in sidewalks that Director Fox has been working on, to make sure that we have connection, really well-built connections to our current sidewalk infrastructure. It's, it's a pedestrian safety issue, it's not necessarily a bicycle safety issue. But if you go back and listen to the recording of the meeting, there were actually a couple of planning board members who had a little difficult time coming to grips with the requirements of the sidewalk system. And to have, you know, our own folks questioning the, you know, viability of something that really makes a lot of sense to all of us and is, is really dovetailed well to our comp plan is a challenge. So we need to work on these things. It's a broader issue. You know, I'm going to join Mike, and I'm going to work as best I can with, with the infrastructure issues from a planning standpoint. We're on the cusp of fairly substantial development in some parts of our city, and I think developers who come in and put that burden on us should, should pay and help offset the cost, and that's exactly the discussion the other night. And I was a little taken aback by the fact that we were, we were questioning the viability of that. So, good work. Hopefully, one of these days, I'm going to jump on my bike, and I'm going to go to Shaw's. All right? And I want to, I'm not doing that until I feel I'm safe, okay? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hatch. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you. As a follow-up and kind of a piggyback on that, in terms of the safety issue which you alluded to earlier, as you were talking about, you know, sort of like things that we could do to, at the ground level, to get the public ready for a share system, would you be willing to offer any recommendations practically in terms of what safety measures we should look to implement, whether it's mentioned in the comprehensive plan, whether it's something, I assume that you may have talked to traffic safety about, I just assume it's a practical thing, or just common-sense things, though, to your point? Because yes, we can add bicycle lanes throughout the city, and whether or not that had anything to do with some of the planning board members wondering why should we, should we do sidewalks or should we do, do we do bike lanes? Because obviously, there's only so much pavement on each side of the road, and of course, people still want to park their cars on the side of the road. But be that as it may, in order to sort of, for lack of a better term, train drivers into not crossing over that solid line, I mean, is it a matter of physical barriers, different lighting, signs? What would you recommend, you know?
Sure.
Because you're the experts on this one.
Yeah, there's quite a few tactics and different ways to address it. A, raised pavement markers would help to some degree, right? And those just provide that little bit of that rumble sort of strip effect when a user, you know, when a driver crosses that line. As for the, even the positioning of the bike lanes themselves, it's a bike lane, it's the lane, the bike lane, and the parking lane on North Street. And if you look at recently in like, around Portland, around Derry Oaks Park, they have flipped the parking lane and the bike lane opposite. So now for them, it's the driving lane, the parking lane, and then the bike lane is closest to the sidewalk, and that provides that physical barrier. And we know not a lot of people park on North Street, there's maybe one or two cars there, you know, throughout the day. However, even just having them removed closer to traffic is, A, would slow down traffic to some degree because they have to pass by vehicles, but it also is one further step removed for that sort of cyclist or that pedestrian that's using that lane. You know, other potentials are bollards. We saw the bollards at the crosswalks that were there for a short time. Noted that there wasn't one for that, I forget the name of the street, for Shaw's. Spring Street, yeah. So they were, the other areas that proved to be somewhat problematic maybe for crosswalks, but that particular intersection didn't have one, and I would have loved to have seen one there, just because that seems to be the primary sort of area where drivers are using the bike lane and parking lane as a bypass lane. So anything we can do to start to delineate between those different types of traffic will be an improvement for safety overall. I also think, right, there are some other challenges. Route 1 itself, right, we, I mean, we've got five lanes, you know, across there at the lights this end. You know, some of those types of heavy crossings, that's a big psychological barrier for both pedestrians and cyclists. So, you know, I'm not the expert in that. So figuring out how do we address that sort of, even just the mental model of connecting the different areas of Saco, I think is going to be an educational campaign, but also look to Pat Fox and everybody at the Traffic Safety Committee to think about, how do we address further? How do we, I think for years, right, and it's not wrong, we've prioritized traffic, right, to improve traffic throughputs because, right, we only have two connections to Bedford, we've got the highway, so we've tried to maximize that throughput. But now we need to start looking at other types of throughput, and that may mean that we slow some of that sort of traffic down to some degree. Yes, it increases traffic, but it does thereby improve safety by, people are driving slower, and we're increasing throughput of both cyclists and pedestrians. So, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns for Jason or the group? Jason, I just have one. What is, it's a great program, I've seen it in large cities.
Yep.
For Saco, what's, what's the big plan for it, though? Is it more of a recreational aspect to provide, or is it more of a actual commuter? Because like Counselor Hatch mentioned, are we going to be having them located outside of Route 5?
Sure.
Or are they going to be isolated to the downtown area?
Yeah, that's-
Because they just have to drive to where they are, so I guess-
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, we know that growth is happening in town, especially, you know, and projected to continue to grow in Saco proper, so to speak, as well as, right, we're seeing growth in Bedford downtown with the Mill changes, and likewise on our side in Old Orchard Beach as well. So I think initially, probably the focus would be around sort of the downtown and connecting the towns to each other, as well as connecting to the beach and like connecting to UNE. You know, I think there probably is some further discussion as like a phase three, phase four, phase five type of discussion to talk about sort of, as you start to get outside of Saco proper, what does that look like? But I do think initially, it probably is that sort of additional sort of commuter connecting to the resources that are sort of available. Because the people that live outside, everybody's still coming into Saco and Bedford and Old Orchard Beach, so it's figuring out where that, yeah, how do we bridge that and how do we help those people either, is it easier for them to get into town because there's less traffic and more people are utilizing, you know, micromodal throughout the town? Or are they coming in town so they can actually use those same services, right? You know, you might park your car at Thornton, for example, ET, and then go right along the ET to somewhere else, another destination. So you're maybe reducing your trip versus cutting out your car trip altogether.
Makes sense heading down to the beach or, you know-
Right, yeah.
Parking down that way. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, not seeing any other comments or questions. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. I'll make sure y'all get a copy of this presentation, is there additional resources in here as well? Thank you.
Okay, next up, new business item B, petition for city acceptance of new public street, Samuel Marshall Drive.
Hi there. So, the last time that Samuel Marshall Drive was brought up to the city council, you guys did have some questions about the $5,000 escrow account that Joe LaVerrier, the city engineer, suggested for the implementation of the granite monuments this coming spring. Since the last meeting, I was able to get a cost breakdown of why the $5,000 was chosen as the escrow amount. So the overall cost of granite monument materials is $750, and the labor and equipment for installation of those granite monuments costs about $2,400, bringing the total cost to $3,150. Because the financial guarantee for work associated with subdivisions is held at 150% of the estimated cost, that would have resulted in escrow of $4,725, and the escrow that was requested was $5,000, so slightly above the 150% required by the ordinance. There was some discussion about whether that $5,000 would be held in an LOC or an escrow, and it would, was determined that the escrow was the best choice because it is physically $5,000 that the city will have on hand for this project. And the applicant is amenable to the situation, and so is the Public Works Department. So if you have any questions, Pat Fox, the Director of Public Works, is here, and he can answer those.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Director Fox? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you. Just curious on the mechanics of the escrow. Is it a joint account at some local financial institution, or how does that work?
Escrow is actually a check submitted to the city of Saco and held in a separate account. So we actually have those funds. And just to be clear what this is, the granite monumentation is nothing more than, it's a four-by-four square, two-foot-tall piece of granite. It's kind of a unique thing. The developer's been trying to get these, and there's just a shortage of them like many other random materials these days. These are really just glorified property pins. They just get placed at key points so that in the, in the future, they're easy to find where the road radius might be or where certain angle points of the right-of-way are that we might need to clarify for doing future road construction or something. So they are just at the corner of people's property, it's just at key points. This is a very, very minor thing. I would, I am here to advocate for moving forward next meeting, accepting the roadway. I just drove down it today, so they did plow the first snow. We like to get the, the streets before plowing occurs, but they did a terrific job. It looks just like the budding city streets, so, but I would rather get it sooner rather than later. So if we could keep it on track for next meeting, I think it will help with maintenance, it certainly will help with the residential expectations of living on a city street for those, for those people that live out there. This is very similar to if, if there were some patches of grass that we didn't think came in or they might not grow back well in the spring, that might be something else that we'd hold a little bit of money for. So this one's very minor, and we were able to back it up with, the $5,000 was theoretical, but we're fortunate that our city engineer has been doing this so long that when he picks a theoretical number, it's almost always, I mean, you can see even once we got the actual invoice copies and all this other stuff, it was within a few hundred dollars, so.
Thank you. And I'm assuming that those of us who have granite posts for our mailboxes ought to keep an eye on them?
We, we don't encourage anyone to have a granite post for their mailbox within the right-of-way.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, great, thank you. So that, you'll see that probably at our next meeting or an upcoming meeting. All right, next one we have, C, is update rules and orders of business.
So everyone in this council knows that every year in December, after the new term begins, we typically take a look at our rules and order of business and discuss and make any amendments or changes that we may see fit. So this is back on our agenda. I know at least one councilor has some ideas and proposals to offer, so that's the opener and opener for discussion.
Great. Any questions for our city administrator? Counselor Berman?
Not a question for the city administrator, just a, an opening comment maybe in discussing the city rules and order of business for the council. I would just like to speak in favor of Counselor Hatch's amendment, lettered A, replacing new business with workshop sessions. And in fact, I'm not sure we need to replace new business. I think new business might have a role when we have an already formulated motion or item that's going to come more or less as written to the council for some initial thoughts. But I believe workshop sessions might provide a really useful tool for us to discuss items that might come before council but are a little ways away from being formulated as a specific motion already. Strategies for rezoning Route 1 might be an example, or another example would have been marijuana regulation strategies. I can imagine education strategies, I can imagine numerous items, overall visions for the city, overall visions for planning and development, being items that might benefit from a more informal discussion around a square table with a more dynamic back and forth. So I just want to speak in favor of reinstating workshop sessions, at least periodically, onto our agenda.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree with the changes submitted by Counselor Hatch and Counselor Berman's comments over the last several years since this change was made. I've been advocating for going back to this system. While I would agree, I don't think we need to eliminate new business altogether. I think adding workshops as a part of new business, it's much more conducive to council moving things forward. I think, at least from my perspective, what I've experienced is we've had items that have worked on by staff, presented to council with very little input, and then because of the rigid and structured nature of our regular agendas, it's pushed onto these agendas, and there's still a lot to talk about. So I think going back to the system that previously was in place gives all of us more of an opportunity to have open discussions, not just amongst council, but staff members. I mean, my first term on council, I remember having, you know, a lot of those opportunities to find out how staff feels about things or even goals they may have, and then we were able to work through those discussions. And then when it was, you know, say 80% ready, we moved it to the regular agenda and, you know, fine-tuned it. But, I mean, as I think you've all heard, it's been a frustrating three-plus years for me since we changed this, because I, many times I feel my hands are chained, and I know other counselors felt that way, so I would welcome this change with open arms. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I would concur with the comments of my previous counselors. I remember sitting in the audience as just a regular citizen, and I would attend the, both the council meetings and the workshops, and the workshops are very informative in that unlike this structure that you see here where we are not allowed by procedure to actually just even talk to ourselves directly, we're only allowed to directly address the chair, and sometimes we sort of try to talk to other people by saying that sort of, like, it's almost like the equivalent of, will you tell that other person what I said, even though the person can obviously hear it? And it's not conducive to really sort of, you know, chewing the fat on a lot of issues. And to be able to sit around a table, hash out some of these things, and that's the important thing I want to put out, though. I'm not interested in going to a workshop if it's sort of like the other workshops that sometimes the people use this, the dias do, though, where we're all still facing each other. I want to go back to, if we do go back, having a table right in the middle, you clear out some of the tables, chairs, and you have staff there that can help us out, and if the people from the community want to come and watch, they can sit around and watch us actually discuss it. Now, I know one of the reasons we win- and watch us actually discuss it. Now, I know one of the reasons we went to new business in this format was because workshops weren't recorded, so therefore people couldn't actually see what was going on. Now, for transparency purposes, putting it in the meeting, that was the purpose. Now, it did structure the discussions too much to the other counselors' point, so I would like to, I, I think it certainly has to be feasible to be able to broadcast, even if we're just sitting right over there. I don't, hopefully not, you know, whether it's the sound or the microphones or whatever, hopefully that's not any impediment to having our workshops be out there for the public to watch, just as they watch a city council meeting. But to make it, make it worth our while as counselors and the mayor to discuss these things, I'd like to see it in that physical format, so we can actually have a free range of ideas amongst each other. Obviously, the mayor, you know, keeps orders, so we don't get crazy, though. But at the same time, we can actually talk things out, though. And I think as a component going forward, like we said, we keep new business, if there's a, if we have a stalemate on an issue, and we have to, you know, we bring it back to the council, we have new business there. And then in new business, excuse me, we can perhaps hash out what we actually want to put on for our first reading. But as a practical thing going forward, I think the only thing we really have to work out is just, what's the balance? I mean, do we go back to one a month, one every other month, or marathon sessions once every three months? I guess that's up for the rest of the council. But the concept, I am in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I want to also build off of what all the other counselors have mentioned. I always liked the workshop setting. I liked being there. The intent of a workshop is for knowledge, and the workshop itself gets, takes away the procedural order of how we have discussions. It, we have discussions, we do not have debates. The workshop allowed to go into the debate, to go into the information. We also used to operate on the first and third being council meetings, and the second being, the second Monday being a workshop meeting. What I loved about that format was I saw more detailed agendas and packets because it gave staff time. The meetings, we need to have all the information that we possibly can have. Workshops allowed staff kind of like a week off if it didn't apply to them, where they could do data collection, they could get us the information we wanted. It allowed for that. Our current rules require us to meet every week, every Monday, except for the fifth Monday. I do not know when we consecutively had four meetings in one month. That format, to me, has not been working, and it has precluded our ability to really have good, solid debates. I'm also aware of several times in which we voted under new business items, and we weren't sure if it was a workshop-type item, or if it was a voting item. And I've come to this meeting prepared for it to be a non-voting discussion, and it turned out to be a voting discussion. And I can tell you, I was not prepared because my mindset was different. My mindset was coming here to learn more, not prepared to vote. And it was in that floor where I had to pivot at a very quick pace. So again, bringing back that workshop every other week is a council meeting, gave time for staff to prepare their documents, time for us to ask questions. It really allowed for, I just, better governance. We tried this model, and that's okay. I was willing to try it, but I haven't found it to be as successful as past experiences. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thanks. Not to beat workshops to death, but it also helps change us from a reactive body, as we are now, always responding to motions put forth by staff, into perhaps a proactive body. Indeed, in addition, you know, to voting, we should be helping set strategic direction for the city, which is hard to do without workshop format. I'd also like to just, just highlight another of Counselor Hatch's proposals, talking about ad hoc committee qualifications for when people apply for seats on the city commission. He makes a couple of suggestions about expanding the application form, which I would also like to submit my support for. While sometimes we may disagree on what creates a qualified candidate, some people prefer novelty, others prefer experience in the city, some prefer professional credentials, other prefer life experience, it is helpful to know what the applicants have and what they're bringing to the table as we debate those relative characteristics. And so I would also be in favor of changing the committee qualification section to solicit more information from applicants.
Thank you. Anyone else with any final thoughts or questions? Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. Item B, first of all, just I'd agree with everything that all the other counselors have said. I, I think the less formal workshop would be advantageous for all of us, including the public. But here in Section B, this is, towards the end of it, it says additionally request that all boards and committees include within their regular meeting agenda provision for general public comment. I don't disagree with the thought. My, my only thought is that I'm not sure that this is appropriate for the council rules and order of business. I mean, the rules and order of business basically apply to a city council. I agree that, you know, that that's maybe something that should be added somewhere, but I'm not sure that this is the proper place. Maybe somewhere in some of the ordinances or something like that. I'm, I don't know the exact place, but just a, just a thought. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, not seeing any additional comments. So just a reminder, if you do have anything to add, any amendments, you want to get those to Brian and Dor Tori by January 3rd for the January 9th packet. Okay, that completes new business and moves us on to item 11, administrative update.
Okay, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. First, just like to officially announce our new old city planner, Emily Cole Prescott. We welcome Emily back to the role. As many of you know, she's no stranger to Saco. She currently serves as our Industrial Compliance Manager at WRRD, and previously served as our City Planner and Economic Development Specialist. So she has quite a background in Saco, and we are expecting a very smooth transition. So welcome back, Emily, and we look forward to everything that she's going to be doing as our city planner. Also, just briefly, I'd like to thank our Deputy City Planner Shannon Chisom for really stepping up during this interim period. She's doing a tremendous job, so thank you to Shannon. Long Range Planning Committee, I know I've had some discussions with a number of you on this. This committee has struggled to gain a quorum in recent times, and I would like to put out words to those members that we would like to get this committee together. So please be in touch with the Planning Department on your availability. There are many important topics and issues to talk about. And our new city planner, as she gets started, this is going to be a renewed focus for her. So the Long Range Planning Committee is a priority of mine. It is a priority of our new city planner, I know, and many of you on this council. So we are looking forward to getting that committee up and running. So please, current members, if you are having scheduling issues, please be in touch with our Planning Department. We will work diligently to try to find a suitable time for everyone on the committee. Lastly, I'd just like to announce tonight the formation of an Affordable Housing Task Force at the staff level. As everyone is aware, housing has become one of the dominant and most challenging issues for our community, the state of Maine, and really our entire country. In light of recent, the Community Satisfaction Survey, what we saw in the Comprehensive Plan, and what came out of also our recent joint meeting with the Planning Board, I think we've heard the message pretty clearly that affordable housing needs to be at the top of our, our to-do list. So to be proactive and take that first step, and really take a serious look at how we take this challenge on, I'm announcing the formation of a city staff-level Affordable Housing Task Force. This group is going to meet to research strategies, to vet proposals, to seek information, to investigate partnerships, among other things, and report out our findings to policymakers. That's you guys. I think it's time to really make an effort to try to tackle this issue, and it starts, I think, with us at the ground level. So I'll be announcing the, the official list of task force members in the near future in a future admin report, and also a rough timeline for some, some actual recommendations. And we'll, of course, keep you guys up to date on our progress, what we're doing, and what we're working on. But I think this is a, this is going to be a great proactive step we're taking at the staff level to get this, get this issue moving forward and to make some real progress here in the city of Saco. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Kenneth. Next on the agenda, council discussion and comment. Is there any, oh, I'm sorry, any questions? Counselor Archer?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just wanted to know, is the Housing Committee, which Counselor Gunn and myself are on, are we going to work in conjunction with this committee, be part of this committee, or are we by default an ad hoc separate committee?
That's a good question. As you know, I think the Housing Committee you're talking about hasn't really been overly active recently. So-
Recently, yeah.
Yeah. So this is something we should talk about. Maybe both of our committees could work together, you know, more on the, you know, electives. But this was, this was to be considered a staff-level committee, where we research ideas, vet proposals, and bring them to you. So I think let's, let's talk more on how these two groups can work together on the same mission, and maybe even have some joint meetings and some collaboration there, and see what we can do. So we'll, we'll talk more on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Hatch?
Not a question, but a comment. Brian, I'm going to give you a couple kudos here for stepping up, showing some good leadership. These are two topics that need action, and we've been talking about them for years, and now we need to put some action plans together. So my compliments to you in your role as city administrator.
Thank you. Okay, all right, not seeing anyone else. Now, next on the item is item 12, council discussion and comment. Are there any council discussions or comments? Okay, not seeing any. With the absence of Mayor Doyle tonight, we are not having the executive session. That will be moved to a future meeting. So there is no report as well. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor, second by Counselor Berman. We'll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gunn, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn at 8:43, approved. And thank you all for joining, and hope everyone has a Merry Christmas and happy holidays through the first of the year, and we'll see you in 2023. Thank you.